She's a mom. She have been in some fashion events, big ones, in Finland. And we also have Mad Eyez. Mad Eyez have made some hits in music. He's a musician. If you don't know who's Mad Eyez, just go to on Afro Sunday. He's always there because he's a music guy. You would just see him, most amazing. I'm not gonna take too long before they kick me out, but I really wanted to dance, DJ, please. You know, I have some moves I was practicing home. Come on, man, come on. I need some, some little bit, you know? And I also this... Thank you, thank you so much. I'm not sure how long I should be on the stage.
Alright!
Thank you, guys, and I hope you're gonna enjoy the show.
Oh!
No one sees.
Oh, dear, we are about to kick you out. Come on, move it, move, move. Thank you so much for the introduction. Hello, everybody!
How you doing, ladies and gentlemen?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited to be here. I mean, everyone at the back, please, can you come forward? I mean, please, can we do this? Come forward a little bit, please?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
The place is big, all this is your space.
Yes, yes.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, welcome, welcome.
Welcome, we are all excited, we are excited, Mad Eyez, right?
Of course.
This is my first time working with you on stage. And I know definitely you're not gonna be naughty on the stage with me.
No, 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 I'm, I'm gonna be fair.
Okay.
Alright?
Okay.
But first of all, you're looking wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you so much, yeah. And you two, you're looking dapper.
Thank you, always giving it black. Anyway, we are here for the Yarvempa Multicultural Day.
Yes.
This is the first time the city of Yarvempa
Oh, yeah.
is organizing this day.
Event, yes.
This event, this kind of event. So, give it up to the city
Yes.
for this initiative.
Yes.
Yes.
As we said, we are really excited. This is the first time, and you know, culture brings everybody together. It's so exciting to be here and seeing different people from different countries to show their talent on this very stage.
That is very true. Uh, so the event is produced by Diaspora Glitz Magazine.
Oh, yes.
Uh, there is...
The one and only.
Yes, that's the main man. And also sponsored by the Culture and Event Service of the city of Yarvempa.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. And we are all excited. Okay, right. Meanwhile, I'm gonna tell you all the musical hearts that we have here, alright? We have Yeboya here, we have Frankosom and the family, we have Gandhi, Mather... Sorry, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon if I don't pronounce it right.
You, 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 you have to take course in the Hindi language.
Sometimes I wish I can speak in African way, okay? Maybe I'll do that, eh, hey, okay. So, Yani Teran is here, eh, hey? And Mera and the band, a multicultural band from the Middle East is here as well.
Okay, and our keynote speakers tonight, oh, this evening, we have Hussein Alteh, Member of Parliament, Rita Kostama, Yarvempa City Councilor. We have Shamsul Alam, Care of a City, Councilor, Emma. Aha, Tamankam.
Ah, that's my sister, you're not pronouncing it well.
Oh, okay, I, I, I beg your pardon. Um, uh, she's the healthcare, she's a healthcare professional. And we have Mikhail Da Costa, a serial entrepreneur. And we got Kelly Kalongi, Miss Helsinki 2013.
Oh, yes.
She was the winner and Big Brother, also Finland, ex-housemate. Okay, without forgetting, ladies and gentlemen, we have vendors and exhibitors outside.
Oh, yes.
Uh, and also we have food in the rest, uh, at the restaurant.
At the restaurant, yes.
Yeah, but remember not to bring foods and drinks inside.
Yeah, no, 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 it's not allowed here.
Not allowed.
Yes.
Uh, but we, we can have our drinks here, we can.
But we're on the stage, we can do anything we want to do on the stage, right?
I understand, we are the, we are, we have, it's an exception for us. Okay, without further ado, we would like to introduce you, we would like to introduce to you Mr. Sami Ulysari, the director, cultural director of Yarvempa City.
Give him a round of applause!
Thank you, guys, and hello, everybody. Hey, my name is Sami Ulysari, and I'm the director of Archan Culture here at the city of Yarvempa. I am not Emily Beldonin, as it says on the program, but I'm sure most of you can see that already. So, uh, welcome to Yarvempa, everybody, and welcome to Sibelius Hall. I am thoroughly excited to, that Yarvempa is hosting first time for this event that celebrates diversity. We have an excellent program today, and, and there's much to see. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot, lot more people coming in later on today as, as the day is starting now and, and goes on until 10 o'clock in the, in the evening. So, there's a lot to see today. If you have a chance, there's, there's a lovely day outside. If you, if you don't know Yarvempa, if you're first time in Yarvempa and you have a chance, take a walk in the, in the, in the town, in the city center, and go and see Rantapuisto, which is the park near the lake. It's, it's really beautiful today, and, 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 uh, and so you get to know the city a little bit as well. But that's it, really, from me. I, uh, wish you have a lovely day today, and I bid you a warm welcome once more to this great event. See you, guys.
Alright, to the next.
Um, rather way, let's call the executive producer of this event.
Shall I say the man of the hour?
Yes.
Putting us together, alright?
You, you are Nigerian, so you know the name. I don't know how to pronounce the name very well, I don't, you know? So, please, help me out to pronounce Mr. Obi Zekenim.
Eh, wait, wait, Aba, no, 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 no. Okay, we will say it in my mother tongue again, yes. We are about to welcome Mr. Obi Unwan Chuku. Please give him a round of applause!
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Obi Westuchichuku, the publisher of Diaspora Glitz Magazine, and I'm the producer of this event, Yarvempa Multicultural Day 2022. Culture is what I believe in, because culture brings people together. Culture fosters peace and it promotes tranquility. I'm the publisher of this magazine for the immigrant community in Finland, and I organize several events as well. This year alone, my media organization, we organized the first event in the month of March, where we celebrated outstanding women of African background, those who have impacted our society. Then in the month of April, we organized one of the biggest events in Helsinki called the African Food Challenge, where seven countries competed to know which country makes the best food, and Senegal won. So, I'm here today organizing with the help of Yarvempa City Council, bringing us together to celebrate our culture. And I want to say a very big thank you to my good friend, but she's not here, I don't know if she's around, Rita Kostama, Yarvempa City Councilor, who made this happen by telling them that there's one guy who can organize a big event, bringing people together, and that's why we are here. So, relax, we have everything here today to make you guys happy. And I promise you all a great evening. Thank you very much.
Alright, we can do better, please, give him a round of applause. We can see him in the flowing, he looks like power shoot, right? But that is the culture of Ivo, because he's from Ivo Land. But normally, I should have greeted him like, "Ivo Kueno", so he's gonna come out like way. But it's so nice to see that the way he brings everybody together and encouraging everyone in this society.
And what tribe do I look like in your country?
I don't know, I can just say you're just a Lagos boy, you know? A city boy.
Oh, God, I feel offended because, but anyway, it's good, it's not bad. I thought I would be a chief.
Actually, it's a good compliment, if you don't know, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but you look good, okay? Maybe he wants me to remind him again that you look good.
No, I wanted, you know, the chief thing, you know, you like...
Oh, you want me to call you Chief Mad Eyez?
Oh, that works for me, that works for me.
Alright, so we go to the next, next, next in line. This is a wonderful dance group, okay? They are called Napura Dance Group from India. I just saw them, oh, thank you, give them a round of applause, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful.
You know why it's so exciting? Because they look so beautiful, you know? And I can see that they are ready to give us an ex, a special, a special, I mean, show for us tonight.
You better get ready for them, and they are young, very young, actually. You know, I was expecting some, you know?
Big people.
Exactly, and I was surprised, I was like, hello.
Oh, yes. So, to remind you, just to let you know, the Indian dance performance is choreographed by this Prakash. I'm sorry if I don't pronounce it well. And artistic director of Napura School of Dance. Oh, please give them a round of applause again, it's not easy. Alright, so, dance presents an inocation, dance praising Lord Ganesh. In Hindu, it is mythology. Lord Ganesh is also known as Vignesh, oh, I'm sorry. Please, can you help me with that?
Vighnaharta.
Ah, Vigna, okay, alright, thank you so much.
My Hindu is not too bad.
You know what, because I don't want to offend anybody today, alright? So, that's why. Which means remover of obstacles and the Lord of beginnings. Please, give them a round of applause as a common stage.
Wow, wow.
Wow, beautiful! We can do better, please give them a round of applause! Oh, my gosh.
Aren't they wonderful? Eh? They are amazing, I told you, they're young.
Amazing, yes.
Beautiful, and they know what they're doing.
Oh, no, you know what? I'm actually feeling guilty that I didn't bring my children to come see this, because I can see those who are not here, they don't know what they are missing out.
Uh, I was about, actually, you know, I was watching what they were doing, and I was like, okay, they are too flexible, you know? I tried a little, but then I feel like...
I think I can. Now, I'll take it back.
Uh, but actually, I used to love Bangra music.
Oh, really?
But I, I used to be a fan of Bangra music when I was a kid.
Okay, okay.
And I watched so many, so many movies, Indian movies.
Exactly, when I was younger, I do watch.
So, anyone from India?
Woo, oh, okay.
Uh, you, you know Amita Bachchan? American? Oh, so...
That's nice, yes, all Indians are here.
Exactly, so we grew up to that music and all the Bollywood movies, so, you know?
Bollywood, yes.
Kaho Na Piya He? Eh? All that, we used to sing.
Another one that I like is Jai Ho, ah, with the music adoro, I like that song, yeah.
Exactly. Anyway, the program is still going on, and now coming up on stage, it's a multicultural band from the Middle East, and we're talking about Palestine. Ladies and gentlemen, are you ready, guys?
Are we ready?
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. Okay, to remind you, we have food and vendors
Definitely.
out there, but remember, don't bring your drinks here in the hall.
Yes.
You can have, you can enjoy everything from that side, okay?
I think we should plead with them, please, don't bring your food in here. Because there's a reason for it, it's why we have to remind everyone.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm too much of this army guy, kind of, you know, the things like, you know, don't, do or don't.
Alright.
Ready?
Are we ready?
I think they are. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for Mera and the band.
Yes, welcome!
Hey, everyone, so we're gonna start here singing some Middle Eastern traditional and folk songs that comes from Middle Eastern, like Jordan, Palestine, Lebanon, Syria, and Iraq, and Egypt. So, basically, most of it is traditional and talks, also, most of it talks about love. So, I'm gonna start with Sameh from Syria, he's on Aud, and Alex from Iraq, and piano, and I am Mira. I'm gonna be the singer here with you today, from Palestine. I hope you enjoy, guys. Yes. Can I have the voice of a little bit? Thank you. Thank you, so I wanna know, like, basically, how long time we still have? Because it seems like we need to cut a little bit from the songs. So, here is also Palestinian traditional dance, it's called Dabke. Give it up for this amazing dancer from Palestine that just started to dance with us today.
Oh, wow, give them a round of applause, oh, well done!
Thank you aloud, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think we forgot to recognize somebody amongst us here. And that is the person who is giving us a sound here.
Exactly.
I'm talking about the music.
Music, the music man.
And that is DJ Nesta. Nesta is in the beauty!
Yes, sir.
For those who have been longing entertainment in Finland, like Mad Eyez and I, of course, we all know each other. Hello!
Someone is scaring me now, can you tell me, you know, I, I know that from home?
I know.
Yes.
See, I will tell you something, when you see a Nigerian, because I'm Nigerian, we are very loud, and before we get to the venue, you will hear us from afar. And that is what is happening right now. And this next dance group I'm about to introduce to you, they are Anambra Dance Group. Okay, before, wait, wait, I have to introduce you now.
Uh, you say it aloud.
So, if I say, "Ibo Kueno", you say, "Hey", alright? Because if I don't do this part, they will kill me, oh, alright? Ibo Kueno! Ibo Kueno! Ibo Kueno! We say, "Oh, hey!" Thank you! Ladies and gentlemen, Anambra Dance Group!
Put your hands together! Put your hands together! But, but you know,
Wow!
we were supposed to be fighting, that's what I saw.
We gotta go, hey, 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 hey! There we go!
I cannot do that.
Oh my god!
These guys, I was just telling her that I'm calling that the, was it like the Fight and Makeup Dance?
Yeah, Fight and Makeup.
Yeah, because they were like, ah, and then after that, they are fine.
Because from there, they are very proud, okay? And you can see it in their dance, when they are dancing and shaking, yes.
It's, and also it's more like the Lazy Dance, you know? You know, you just move and that's it.
Alright. Please give them a round of applause! Oh my gosh, I told you so!
How are you doing?
Yes! We need to...
You, you, you seem to be a little bit like, you know, something is missing. Ah, you doing?
Oh, it's only one person I heard.
I'm just asking.
Are we enjoying the show? How are we all feeling tonight?
Beautiful?
Wait, wait. Answer before we go on. How are we all feeling tonight?
Okay, you're feeling great, beautiful, and?
Angry!
Well, we got food, we got food, we got food. Yeah?
They are angry. Oh, let's remind them again. We got a restaurant outside there.
Obi, what did you say? The food.
Yeah, that is what I am doing.
What food do they have?
So, so it's a lot of food outside, so let me remind you one more time. No, not even one more time.
Yeah.
We're gonna be reminding them.
Every time.
Yeah, yeah. We have food outside, there are a lot of vendors out there, a lot of fashion, clothes, and jewelries and everything that you need to get, alright? Because we have promised you an awesome show. And tonight, we are fulfilling our promise, right?
Exactly.
Oh, yes.
That's what we're doing.
Okay, so are we all ready for the next?
If you know the song, let's sing together, okay? Thank you. Muistan quinka ensi kerran sinua su telid, ya quinka palion siloin pel kasin. Muistan etasano insule yotain kaunista, yotain mitahalusinkin aina sanoan. Anybody? Ala yata minua, ala yata mina tarvitsen sinua, ala koskan mene pois, ala koskan mene pois. Mina tahdoin rakasta eneman quinkoskan, tahdoin anta sulle kaiken mingkavoin. Uritin olla hyva ya usta vallinen, tahdoin etat tiedat quinka palion valitan. Come on, everybody! Ala yata minua, ala yata mina tarvitsen sinua, ala koskan mene pois, ala koskan mene pois. Sina olit minulle kaikimita tarvitsin, vain sinua aina kaipasin. Enela malta siloin palion mutapytanu, quin etasaisin sinut aina pitahoma nai. kusuinitseltani tavoiko olla tota. Uritin olla hyva ya usta vallinen, tahdoin etat tiedat quinka palion valitan. Ala yata minua, ala yata mina tarvitsen sinua, ala koskan mene pois, ala koskan mene pois. Ala yata minua, ala yata mina tarvitsen sinua, ala koskan mene pois, ala koskan mene pois. Ala koskan mene pois, ala koskan mene pois. That's the first one. Zero to ten, how's my finish? Was it five? Okay, great. So the next song is actually one of the biggest song recently. It's from Adele. If you know the song? Easy on Me, so please be easy on me, okay? Yeah, Easy on Me. I believe that everybody knows this song. Come on. There is no gold in this river that I've been washing my hands in forever. I know there is hope in these waters, but I can't bring myself to swim when I am drowning in this silence, baby. Let me in, go easy on me, baby. I was still a child, didn't get the chance to feel the world around me. I had no time to choose what I chose to do, so go easy on me. There is no flow for things to change when we are both so deeply stuck in our way. You can deny how hard I tried. I changed who I was to put you both first, but now I give up. Go easy on me, baby. I was still a child, didn't get the chance to feel the world around me. I had no time to choose what I chose to do, so go easy on me. And I had a good intention and a higher soul hope, but I know right now it probably doesn't even show. Go easy on me, baby. I was still a child, didn't get the chance to feel the world around me. I had no time to choose what I chose to do, so go easy on me. Kidos. Thank you. Okay, the last one. Enough with sad songs. Let's move around. I'm not gonna be moving like the previous dancer, that was too awesome. I cannot imitate them. But the next one is Can't Take My Eyes Off Of You. I think everybody knows this song, right? This is an easy song. Okay? If you know, if you know this song, please sing along with me. Help me here, help me. Okay, the next one, the last one, everyone. Can I get your clap? Hey, hey! Thank you. You're just too good to be true. Can't take my eyes off of you. You'd be like heaven to touch. I wanna hold you so much. And lost like love have arrived. And I thank God I'm alive. You're just too good to be true. Can't take my eyes over you. Pardon the way that I stare. There's nothing else to compare. The sight of you leaves me weak. There are no words left to speak. But if you feel like I feel, please let me know how it's real. You're just too good to be true. Can't take my eyes over you. Here we go! I love you, baby. And it is quite alright, I need you, baby. I need you, baby. To warm the lonely night. I need you, baby. Trust in me when I say. Oh, pretty baby. Don't let me down, I pray. Oh, pretty baby. Now that I love you, stay. And let me love you, baby. Let me love you. You're just too good to be true. Can't take my eyes over you. You'd be like heaven to touch. I wanna love you so much. And long last love has arrived. And I thank God I'm alive. You're just too good to be true. Can't take my eyes over you. I love you, baby. And it is quite alright. I need you, baby. To warm the lonely night. I love you, baby. Trust in me when I say. Oh, pretty baby. Don't let me down, I pray. Oh, pretty baby. Now that I found you, stay. And let me love you, baby. Let me love you. Kidos. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for having me here.
Yes, of course, we are happy to have you here. Please give him a round of applause. Wow!
Gandhi Monte. Thank you very much. Could you please tell us who's coming on stage?
So the next hat coming is a cultural dance group, okay? They are from Cameroon. I'm telling you, these men here, they are ready. They are hyped. If you see what they are wearing, beautiful. And they're gonna be showing different style, okay? They have fashion in their group.
I'm wearing a refined version of their... Yes. Ladies and gentlemen.
We're ready. Wow, wait a minute, I need to introduce them more, all right? So Cameroon Finland Cultural Dance Group. They have performed at big events like the Finnish Independence Day Celebration organized by Vanta City Council. They are known with the tongue attire. I don't understand, what is it saying? Oh?
Atogu.
Atogu, okay.
So this is the refined version of their... Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for...
Kan! Oh, wow, wow! I would like to introduce to you that she's coming all the way from Dussula. Oh, yes. That is why I said Yarvempa City is having everybody from different angles in Finland coming down here. All right. So, our topic is immigrants' health and well-being. An important part of integration. This is really important for us to know.
It is important, yes.
But I don't think this five minutes is enough for us.
Well, let's see what she has because I'm very sure she's very... I've seen her, she's a very samarized person.
Okay, well, don't forget she's a lecturer, and I know she can do it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome Emma Tamanga!
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Let's make some noise. Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here. And I wanna thank the organizers of this day, this event, and of course, Yarvempa City. So, you are setting a very good example, and I'm sure many other cities will benchmark this. I'm going to talk to you today about immigrants' health. My name is Emma Tamankak. I'm a senior lecturer in the Department of Nursing at Lari University of Applied Sciences. And I'm an immigrant myself. Or very often I say I'm from UENSO. But I'm a world citizen. So I'm a Finnish, or I'm a Finn. I'm a Cameroonian. I'm a Nigerian. I'm an Ethiopian. I'm a Chinese. So I'm all of that. Integration. The world is changing. Ma ilma muutto. Exo. And we have to go with the flow. So integration is today one of the most important topics that is discussed in many, many backdoors or even open forums. The population of immigrants in Finland have lived here for 23 years. And when I came here, there were very few people of my color. But today, I'm very proud when I turn around, I see people from all over the world. A beautiful garden of flowers of different colors, different fragrances, different shapes. That's the beauty of integration. That's the beauty of a multicultural environment. So, health is very important. I consider myself a lady on a mission to stop chronic diseases because chronic diseases are on the rise. And especially among the immigrant population. In the past, we used to have what we call the healthy migrant effect, which means that when migrants move to a country like Finland, they are always very healthy. Everything is good. But then after a couple of years, then there's a downward trend. Their health starts deteriorating. Why is that? Not so much has been studied in Finland to establish why immigrants' health suddenly after a couple of years living in Finland becomes a big problem. They are more sick, they develop different kinds of illnesses. Not only communicable diseases, but also infectious diseases. It's a call for concern. Immigration comes with a lot of positive changes in a country like Finland. People come here to work, contribute to the economy, contribute to the society. But health is a social determinant of that, and we cannot ignore it. We have to take it very seriously. The reasons why we shouldn't joke with this is because when immigrants become sick, they are not able to contribute to the economy. Are we there? So we want to make sure that the immigrant population also understands the importance of taking care of their health. But not only that, the healthcare professionals need to understand that immigrants are not one set of people. They are very diverse. Somebody talked about, or talked of the one size fits all. It doesn't work for immigrants. We are not the same people. So our healthcare professionals need to design culturally sensitive health promotion packages that takes into consideration the special characteristics of each of the immigrant groups. That is how we get to take care of our immigrant population. Health is a topic that we can talk about from here to tomorrow, or from now to tomorrow, but because I was given only five minutes, and you know teachers talk a lot, so I'm doing everything possible to stay or stick within the time that has been given to me. But I really want each and every one of you to remember that when we talk about immigrants' health, there are many things that needs to be considered. It's not so straightforward. How you came here is something that needs to be considered. Did you come here as a refugee? How did you get here? Some people come here through unscrupulous means. Or maybe they've had dangerous, the journey has been very dangerous. They have had serious issues to deal with along the way. And when they get here, what happens? They have to wait for many years before they are even given a residence permit. Every immigrant, every immigrant has a history. Every immigrant you meet in this country has a history. They have their whole lives that they've left behind. They have a family. They have the environment. They have all of those things that they've left in their home countries. And then they move to Finland where everything is different from the people, from the culture, from the food, to the weather. Everything is different. It takes a toll on our health as immigrants. Our social network is not large enough. Mental health becomes a problem. But I wanna come here, or sorry, I wanna leave you guys with a very, very positive, with a very, very positive news. Somebody that has lived in this country for 23 years, like I mentioned, I have seen the steady growth, the steady progress that Finland has made to ensure, you know, the health of immigrants or to make sure that health of immigrants is under checked. But we also know that immigrants do not utilize all of these, you know, available resources, all of this available help that is out there. There are many factors that contribute to that. Culture is one of them. We have many immigrants who do not trust the healthcare system. They do not trust the healthcare system. We have many immigrants who will not go to the hospital when they are sick because they think that the doctor will not understand my language. We don't have a common language. The doctor will not understand, you know, the things I'm going through. I spoke to a woman who was almost committing suicide. A mother, an immigrant mother. And I asked her, "When you went to the children's clinic, Neuvola, did you tell the Neuvola-tati or the public health nurse that you are suffering from depression?" She said, "No." I said, "Why you didn't?" And her response to me is that "Because I was afraid they were gonna take my baby." But you know what? When I left the room, I burst into tears. I felt like I should just go, you know, kill myself somewhere. This is one woman's story, but it's the story of so many immigrant mothers in this country. Something has to happen. So I wanna really call on not only Yarvempa City, but healthcare professionals, different institutions, the third sector organizations, grassroots organizations, that when it comes to immigrants' health, we can only do it together, just like the many other things. We have to work together to ensure that immigrants in this country have the knowledge when it comes to their health, that they also know where to go to seek for help, they have the courage to go seek for help and talk about it, talk about your problems, and that we are there for each other. Because at the end of the day, a healthy society makes a vibrant society. It also creates a vibrant economy. Everybody benefits. It's for the benefit of everybody. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna leave you now, but let's not forget... but let's not forget. Together, we are stronger. We are in this together. And every immigrant sitting here and listening to me, remember, health is wealth. There is no greater wealth than that of good health. So seek for help. Make sure that you expand your network. Get friends that you can talk to. When you hear about any health promotion event, please attend. If you have a problem, talk to somebody who understands you. It is so important. So I thank you so much for listening to my very boring, boring speech. And I wish you guys a wonderful evening. Thank you, thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Oh, we can't do better! Please, yeah!
South African.
Wow, that's a beautiful speech, wow.
That was wonderful.
I told you she's a lecturer. She's gonna lecture everybody. And she did that, yes. Thank you so much.
This is going so well. But like I said, I promised I'll sing for them something. And you're going to be the judge and the other...
So I'm gonna turn around.
But actually, they know the song. Yes, you do.
I'll be your backup singer. Or dancer.
I've heard there was a secret chord that David played, and it pleased the Lord. But you don't care for the music, do ya? It goes like this. The fourth and fifth. The major. Or what?
I'm listening.
It goes like this. The fourth and fifth. The minor. And the major. Hallelujah!
Oh, yes.
Hallelujah.
Everybody! Thank you, wow!
You know the song, you know the song.
You all are so wonderful, really. This is beautiful.
They know the song, I told you.
They do, they do.
Okay, where are the judges? Are you turning around? Do I qualify? Voice of Finland?
Yes!
Yes! And then I'll be doing the dance.
Oh, yes.
I'll be doing the dance.
All right. Madice, you know what is coming now?
Of course.
I will leave Madice to introduce this one.
Um, wait a minute.
Because we understand why I will leave Madice to introduce this one.
Okay.
Okay, Madice, introduce.
Okay, so after, you know, singing something smooth, we got something savage coming. Oh, she's ready. You're ready? Oh my God, okay.
I think there are lots of savages here.
Oh, okay. And for those who, you might think like, okay, this is not, you know, for the kids you can put...
Wait, wait, wait. First, we ask, how many of us are children here?
Your children, eh? Please get the paper and cover your eyes.
It's time to close your eyes.
Yeah, you close, okay? Don't cheat, okay?
We give you permission. Yes. Because this time we are going to walk.
Ladies and gentlemen, we got the savage. It's a twerking dancing group. Led by Sekujumponda.
Shake, shake, shake!
Eh! So they're gonna shake. I was doing the thing there already, so...
I did, no, no.
Yeah, I already did my part.
Madice is learning. That is why I said I leave this to Madice.
I did my part already. So ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for the savages.
Yeah! Savages! Everybody, everybody, yeah!
Yeah. So Yarvempa City...
Don't forget, so we still have more.
We still have more, yeah. But you know, we need to have fun. If you play Ntoshkaz, I gotta, you know, give up on my boy. And I have a South African here.
Yeah, why not?
Did I do well? Will your, will your parents give you to me? Okay, good. Then we have a deal.
See him, he's looking for a wife here. Can you imagine, Madice?
My lady would shoot me right now. She would be look at him.
All right, all right, all right. We still have wonderful speakers in the house, and we have wonderful performance coming your way. Your boy is in the building!
Yes, yes.
All right, all right. So the next one. Fashion show coordinated by Irene. We welcome you.
Enjoy the show, ladies and gentlemen. Mister DJ.
Vamos, casi uno. Y de la noche a la mañana estás soltera. Manos para arriba, ¿qué? Y de la noche a la mañana estás soltera. Y de la noche a la mañana... ¿Cómo dice? Manos para arriba, casi uno, ¿qué? En cule. Anda soltera, le dicen la dueña de la disco. Si sale para allá, que ella no quiere. Ella dice que va así, la que ella vive a su manera. No de explicación ni querer. Ella está bien chula, bien fina. Todo lo que trae le combina. Te seduce cuando camina, pero con cualquiera. Y dice qué? Y de la noche a la mañana dejó al novio. Y ahora anda por la disco sin parar. Ella no quiere que le hablen de matrimonio porque ella solo está pensando, ¿cómo dice? Y de la noche a la mañana estás soltera. Y de la noche a la mañana... Casi uno. Everybody with me, ¿cómo? En culemita, ¿qué, qué? Y de la noche a la mañana estás soltera. Y de la noche a la mañana, ¿cómo dice? Casi uno, ¿qué? Repítelo conmigo, ¿qué? Y de... Fina. Y un hombre a sufrir. Tú la ves que se matina, se enfrena. Quiere salir. Ella sale cada fin de semana. Solo quiere bailar y gozar. Y se va con sus amigas, no para. Solo quiere bailar. Y dice qué? Y de la noche a la mañana dejó al novio. Y ahora anda por la disco sin parar. Ella no quiere que le hablen de matrimonio porque ella solo está pensando, ¿cómo dice? Y de la noche a la mañana estás soltera. Y de la noche a la mañana andas soltera. Everybody with me, come on! Repítelo conmigo, ¿qué? Vamos a ver, vamos a ver. Y de la noche a la mañana estás soltera. Y de la noche a la mañana estás... Everybody with me, ¿cómo? En culemita, ¿cómo? Ahí nada más, muchos esas. Manos para arriba, mi gente, ¿qué? ¿Dónde están la gente que habla español? Eso. Applause, applause. En culemita. Okay, Segura Vici Bailando. Todos a bailar, vamos. Ole! Y cha, cha, cha. Yo te miro y se me corta la respiración. Yo te miro y se me corta la respiración Cuando tú me miras se me sube el corazón Y en silencio tu mirada dice mil palabras La noche en la que te suplico que no salga el sol Bailando
Bailando
Bailando Tu cuerpo y el mío llenando el vacío Subiendo y bajando
Subiendo y bajando
Bailando
Bailando
Bailando Ese fuego por dentro me va enloqueciendo Me va saturando Con tu física y tu química También tu anatomía La cerveza y el tequila Y tu boca con la mía Ya no puedo más Ya no puedo más Con esta melodía, tu color, tu fantasía Con tu filosofía A mí cada vez estaba así Ya no puedo más Ya no puedo más Hoy quiero estar contigo Contigo Tener contigo una noche loca ¡Casi uno! Hoy quiero estar contigo Contigo Una noche loca ¡Ay, tremenda! ¿Cómo dice? ¡Casi uno, todo el mundo! ¡En culé, mitad! ¡Ay, nada más, go! Tú me miras y se me llevas otra dimensión Tus latidos aceleran a mi corazón Qué ironía del destino no poder tocarte Abrazarte y sentir la magia de tu olor Bailando
Bailando
Bailando Tu cuerpo y el mío llenando el vacío Subiendo y bajando
Subiendo y bajando
Bailando
Bailando
Bailando Ese fuego por dentro me va enloqueciendo Me va saturando Con tu física y tu química También tu anatomía Cerveza y el tequila Y tu boca con la mía Ya no puedo más Ya no puedo más Con esta melodía, tu color, tu fantasía Con tu filosofía A mí cada vez estaba así Ya no puedo más Ya no puedo más Hoy quiero estar Vivir Bailar Tener Una noche loca ¡Ay, besar tu boca! Hoy quiero estar Vivir Bailar Tener ¡Ay, tremenda, no, qué! ¿Cómo dice? ¡Cómo! ¡En culé, en culé! ¡Vamos! ¡Everybody, casi uno! Bailando, amor Bailando, amor Es que se me va el dolor ¡Eso, eso! Mite, mene, mite, mene Oko kaiki jibin Noni, nu juta, juta, yos kaiki ojibin ¡Uh! ¡En culé, mitad! Yes, noni, ya qué tan, ya qué tan Tú me vuelves loco cuando te pones a bailar Y ese movimiento ahí que te hace vibrar Pero esta noche, morena, tú serás mía Mi reina Y esta noche, morena, tú serás mía ¡Ay, mi reina! Uno, dos, tres, ¡vamos! Ven, vamos a formar una fiesta ahora ¡Ay, cariño, solo deja de querer! Tú y yo, yo y tú ¡Mira! Ella me zumba contra la pared Bebe eso en la boca y bece su piel Bailando nos pegamos hasta el amanecer Esa mujer me hace enloquecer Ella tiene bomba para bailar Ella tiene un swing para disfrutar Le gusta que le inviten a vacilar Y se la pasa fenomenal ¡Y sube lo! Ven, vamos a formar una fiesta ahora ¡Ay, cariño, solo deja de querer! ¡Mira! Tú y yo ¡Ey, ey, ey, ey! Tú me tocas y yo te toco, mami ¡Ay, si me rozas y yo te toco, baby, eh! Y si te acaricio un poco, mami, eh Tú me tajo, olvídate y dices Y esta noche yo quiero tenerte Para explicarte quiero tenerte Y decirte en la cara que muero de ganas Y una noche más quiero verte Pero esta noche, morena, tú serás mía Mi reina Y esta noche, morena, tú serás mía ¡Ay, mi reina! Uno, dos, tres, ¡vam! Ven, vamos a formar una fiesta ahora ¡Ay, cariño, solo deja de querer! Tú y yo, yo y tú ¡Ey, ey, ey, ey! ¡Manos para arriba! ¡Casi uno, vamos! Se vale, ¿cómo dice? ¡Seguimos! ¡Paramos! ¡Seguimos! ¡Paramos! ¡Seguimos! ¿Y qué tú dices? ¿Y qué tú dices? ¡Ay, nada más! ¡Quitos, valion! ¡Aplaudí! ¡Quitos!
¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Eh! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡No soy ningún baka! ¡No soy ningún estrella de la humanidad! ¡Estoy sintiendo mazaga! ¡Y yo seré su número uno, el rock rock! ¡Necesita un hombre que la ame! ¡No hay nadie que la ame! ¡Necesita un hombre que la guarde! ¡No hay nadie que la deje! ¡Oh, amiga, amiga, hola! ¡Yo te digo, no, no! ¡Amiga! ¡Lo sé, te amo! ¡Y tú lo sé, te amo! ¡Oh, amiga! ¡Yo te digo, no, no! ¡Si me dejas, no voy! ¡Nunca te dejo! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Oh, mi amor, no me olvides! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Eh! ¡Te acerques, te acerques, hola! ¡Aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Espera, espera, hola! ¡Hoy es mi día! ¡Yo te digo, no, no! ¡Lo sé, te amo! ¡Y tú lo sé, te amo! ¡Oh, amiga! ¡Yo te digo, no, no! ¡Si me dejas, no voy! ¡Nunca te dejo! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Amiga, oh, amiga! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Estoy aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Hoy es mi día! ¡Oh, mi amor! ¡Siempre con vos, aquí, aquí, aquí! ¡Oh, mi amor! ¡Baby, hola! ¡Shadi, can't give me your love! I said this my house, I say make her there small Ask me I wake up, now she de my mind down Then one day two, one of you folk of us Now so me I go loud, say make we link up As I start to the tell her, if you know my heart is Baby girl if you need me, I no gonna love again Because it get many girls will pull my heart for pain Baby you feel my pain Baby calm down, calm down Girl this your body it put in my heart for lockdown For lockdown, oh lockdown Girl you sweet life and town, and town If I tell you say I love you, no they from me hang out Oh, hang out Not tell me, no, 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 no Baby can't give me your love You got me like Shadi can't give me your love
¡Jarvenpá! ¡Mika talo meininki! It's so nice to be here Thank you so much for the invites I love this energy here I feel like home And like I just have to say that the atmosphere here Has been different From all these places where I go to perform Like here Like when we came here Like what? We were here like 30 minutes And there's like five, six people asking Like is everything okay? Did you find your place? You know, you know? So, thank you so much for taking good care of us
They're making us feel like home
This next song is called "Elovena" And this song...
Come in the front, come in the front Come in the front, let's vibe Come in the front We can, you can hear the music all the way there Come in the front, come vibe with us Come dance with us I can come all the way down here If you all want me to come here, come on Come on, come on, come on
¡Jarvenpá! ¡Tuka laje mas, okay! ¡Tuka batene la vaete! ¡Hey, let's go! On philanthropy Elovena, sexuale Ey, Elovena, horoscopi merki Elovena, lempi kasi mani tree Hey, Elovena, halun alla free Elovena, I care freak or read read Elovena, on IDG Elovena, men sura tunteisi Elovena, on hottiko tuli rakas virtava vesi Okutelle va ya maketa komesi On naturali universum mit cupani Intuiti, nambetori ona beloni On ona lapsi Elovena, hey, mika? Elovena, on ona lapsi Elovena, hey, yeah Elovena, on ona lapsi Elovena Elovena, on ona lapsi Elovena, hey, yeah Elovena, enkaipan materia Amma tarvi paha oma Amma stakken stakkii Etve luoda mele oma Haruen pidal oma Emme kerke mista minda Ku elämä suala juoda päivä syyli Litra guoda sualana huulilasi Elovena Maiston kumeri Elovena On ruokaa sielun lesi Elovena Sisaruksessi Hey, Elovena Luulin et saavuttiin lopullisen muono Mut on tajunut Oh, pekka rakaluonos Kella sinet kesken erä syystenkis huono Mut ei se tee Ommo osa luontoa Hey Elovena, say what? Elovena, on ona lapsi Elovena, ah ¡ jarvenpá! On ona lapsi, mika? Elovena ¡Ah, malunkuu kovenpa! On ona lapsi, mika? Elovena Hey, hey Elovena, on ona lapsi ¡Uh, mika meininki! ¿Oks eliva meininki, hä? ¡Jee! ¡Hey! ¡Okay, ma halun kaikki bailaa Tää beatit dropaa N Y T, ny! ¡Hey, kiitos! ¡Mika meininki! ¡Dám, jarvenpá! ¡Bileat pystissä! ¿Mitkä meillä on seuraavaksi tulossa? Okay, okay, okay Mennään vähän toisiin tunnelmeen Mul on teille pieni tunnustustehtäväksi Because I'm a little bit sensitive person I have feelings, okay? And everybody has feelings, okay?
Yes
So, we just got to admit that We just have to speak about our feelings Communicate with each other, you know? Feelings are gonna be there We're not gonna get rid of them, you know?
Can I say something? I would like to say like As an African person Was raised by African parents both We were not, not teach how to feel our feelings We were tell, ah, please be gone now We have other problems Ah, please be gone now, ah, ah, please, please Why you cry, why you cry? If I don't cry, what do I do?
Yes
I'll go and suffer I'll go and do other bad things So, please, feel your feelings Cry if you have to cry
Yes
Especially black men, please
Yes
Cry if you have to cry And if anybody tells you Why are you crying? Why you feeling your feelings? Tell them, shit, I'm emotional
Yes, let's go
Thank you
This song is about that, so let's party Feeling, feelings is cool Let's go Se on selva, mä on herka Em mun tutelt pelkä otan niistä selvää Se on selva, mä on herka Monikkoita sitä näkyväksi tehdä Se on selva, mä on herka Monikkoita muo sitä vähätellä Se on selva, mä on herka Taika voima jonka avulla me lennään Mo on vasta virtaa ja ei tu nimi reten se kasvan, ne pergenet kohta, no ta, vasta jos sä oot herkä, joina Messi, o itselessi hela, ei miin stressi, jos sä oot herkä, joina Messi, dehätun teidän näytämisestä freshi, jos sä oot herkä, joina Messi, o itselessi hela, ei miin stressi, jos sä oot herkä, joina Messi, dehätun teidän näytämisestä freshi. Kiitos! Mika meiningi? Wow, mä olen ihan yllättynyt. God damn, god damn. Okay, okay. Tämä seuraava biisi, the next song is about being alone, having my own party. Aha, Järvenpää, how you doing tonight? Teillä mitä haluan, teen rahan samalla, jos ei makseta et nää meikä kupila, miksi oisin ulkona, kun voin olla himassa, seurana mun rakas jamaha, on, kiitollinen kutusta, vaikais kiva tavata ja sä oot ihana, on mieluummin yksin, ei millä pahalla, paras mitä teen, on mun jamaha, pull up siva, ei kun mä oon räljo, ai mitä kellar, voisin olla himassa jo, ai miksi mä heitaan, nevois mulle maksajo, ai mikä mulle menoo pistä, mulle lisävero, nari kalleen mä just tein, mut joku tulee tasima stepi, tämä mama liian vaikea sanoo sulle ei, bad baby ei tämä oki niin sus, kun mulle himassa, la ne menoo peli kun jamaha, ja ne kosket tiimet vena, et koska voin palata, huh huh, kunkin sanoo et vois homma nopea, ei voin huviin ta pätä kuvil karata, oot liian upea, mutun ain ole siellä missä jamaha, hapa tehä mitä haluan, hey, hey, teen mitä halu, teen rahan samalla, jos ei makseta et nää meikä kupila, miksi oisin ulkona, kun voin olla himassa, seurana mun rakas jamaha, on, kiitollinen kutusta, vaikais kiva tavata ja sä oot ihana, on mieluummin yksin, ei millä pahalla, paras mitä teen, on mun jamaha, pull up siva, hey, fuck it, testeen oma tavalla, just mitä halu ja rahan samalla, kun paras mitä teen, on mun jamaha, pull up siva, sit suora hima, kleyty veke, heti hitorkin va, jää kapis kaikkea, ei paitsi liha, jos ei oo siellä ruokaa, en mun keho silpila, kodessit mut en mä vastannu, ei johu sus, on olti haslannu, en jaksa olla kodissa, pahas tu, on online, melodia jahdannu, en tee sitä tahalla, se on se jamaha, mul on paljon niiniksi, on niinku koko hubera, ei voi kehittyä, ei voi enää pysyä samana, ja siksi ota suunnamessa on missä ollaissa, ois paljon kaikkea, mutun ain ole siellä missä jamaha, hapa tehä mitä halu, hey, hey, teen mitä halu, teen rahan samalla, jos ei makseta et nää meikä kupila, miksi oisin ulkona, kun voin olla himassa, seurana mun rakas jamaha, on, kiitollinen kutusta, vaikais kiva tavata ja sä oot ihana, on mieluummin yksin, ei millä pahalla, paras mitä teen, on mun jamaha, jamaha, fuck it, testeen oma tavalla, just mitä halu ja rahan samalla, paras mitä teen, on mun jamaha. Paras mitä teen, on mun jamaha. Hey, Järvenpää! Täällä alkaa olla kuuma. Mä olen Järvenpäässä, vällä hyvää saata, ja mä oon täällä, jos sä oot täällä. Me ollaan täällä yhdessä tänään Multicultural Day 2020, tai Jepoja Live, mä haluan esitellä teille mun DJ:n Nita! Ja Tuploajara meillä on Malu! Let's go to the next one. Okay, oletteko valmiita pailla? Otin kuvan Instagrami, nyt sun mutsi on mun fani, kanssii olla varu lasi, kun me jamun arviojaani, Jepo harvinnainen laji, net se mun tavois tani, en sen su roissan me jaani, loija loimut ja paras payback on luoda, aina unelmoinut et voin taite liian kuolla, halun siellä ruokaa, friendit hengaa mun luona, aika famin kaan, en mä suolaan, päätän niitä mitä mieltä tee, research, on rehellinen, paljastelu liikaa word, teen mitä teen, how you watch her, jos ei beefy o beefy jos se tietää sir, kätön filteri, joka suora trajetti, jäljelle jää, rakentama kriti, en ona turha shitin mennä tunteisi, reflektoin, meditoin ja päästän irti siitä, muistni, vanoikun mä dunaa, katso tarkka, ei en mä fuu, jengi hutaa, mut en mä kuule, okay, let's go! Olen nasty lil baby ja mä oon cute, halut edes hymyileen, mut mä oon rude, kun sun freddy tekki mun ne unohtaa sut, vielä se dunit jos sun wifei validseut, kos mä oon nysä, Järvenpää! Mun on life full of peace, jengi kyselee miksi, jo mä oon yse biish, ihan oikea arvasit, on tottunut et jengi tujota, kaikki mitä oon tehnyt, tekisin uudesta, paaseran, niit on hyvin, kumo kuvata jään, historiaat pykijä mun unohtaa, sua kuvata kun mä teen mitä teen, sit sit seka stories mihin meee edelle, tämä ei ole kyllä pahu, silti halut mun et tee, laitat viha posti vasta rakkauskirjeen, en tottelesää, no jos niissä ei oo järke, feidät sun friendit ja skapteeni käsky, ei riitä silmät auki pitää kattoen, nakema on fuck, päätä mikä on mulle tärkeet, kun letti antana, chöi mä ostaa deepi, mulle sopii vaan onku on deepi, tapattuu shitin niin mäkellään, tule hyvä joönä känne mun tarina on, ja mä oon cute, halut edes hymyileen, mut mä oon rude, kun sun freddy tekki mun ne unohtaa sut, vielä se dunit jos sun wifei validseut, kos mä oon nysä, ja mä oon nysä, ja mä life full of peace, jengi kyselee miksi, jo mä oon nysä, ihan oikea arvasit, ei, andukai sa tablein meidän tausta tääri siellä! Ja mä oon nysä, ja mä oon nysä, mul on life full of peace, jengi kyselee miksi, jo mä oon nysä, ihan oikea arvasit. Okay, 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 let's go! Kiitos! Tokka palenimme oli just se, että se kertoi, see that you are that person who's gonna make their dreams come true.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much and the family in the building. We are so honored to be part of Järvenpää Multicultural Day. Are you ready? Are you ready? Let's do it!
Let me tell you about malaria, my friend. Malaria na pantaline so, ay oh. One bite from mosquito. You are in the ghetto, ay oh. I said, one bite from mosquito, wo wo wo. Malaria got you, oh, ay oh. Your body go ego, your lips go deado, your yange go loseo, you go chop everyday. You go carry high, high fever, ay oh. Malaria na chupado, ay oh. Malaria oh. Chup chupado. Malaria oh. Chup chupado. Many many children they die, many many children they die, my people they suffer, we don't die for the sickness, we don't die for malaria, we don't die for mosquito, no, 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 no. What it be this, I say what it be this, mosquito go suck your blood, mosquito go bite for your ash, mosquito grit shit for your body, no, no, no. We must stop ah, we must stop ah, I say we must stop ah, we must stop ah. My people, I beg, mekun on here, oh. If you want to avoid malaria sickness, I mean stop that thing we call insect mosquito. Make sure you close your doors and windows before to go to bed. Spread the insecticide all over your room. And remember, you want to provide your treatise mosquitoless for your family, not so, not be so. I say we must stop ah, we must stop ah, I say we must stop ah, we must stop ah. Me kun on stop ah, me kun on stop ah, malaria na chupado, original sickness, your body go ego, your yange go lose, your teeth then go die, oh, me kun on stop ah, me kun on stop ah, I say me kun on stop ah, your lips go deado, your yange go loseo, your body go weak, me kun on stop ah, me kun on stop ah, I say me kun on stop ah, me kun on stop ah, I say me kun on stop ah, not so, I de beg, me kun on stop ah, oh, eh eh. Kitoz, thank you so much. Are you feeling good tonight? Are you feeling good tonight? Thank you, let's go, nice song.
This is amazing, yeah.
Oh my god.
Really? He is back home, sorry. Long time, long time.
Oh my god.
My people, you need to know this. When things don't belong together, you feel dry ah.
It no go up.
You feel fussy ah.
It no go up.
You feel putah together, I say it no go up. I don't miss with the water, I don't miss with the water, I don't miss with the water, I don't miss with water. Make you not understand my talk oh, I dey beg, no before wahala. We are not supposed to match with everybody in this life oh. Baby can say ah. No matter how we dey try, how we dey fight, we will never combine oh 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 oh. No matter how hard we dey try, we go dey lie side by side, like oil and water. When I go right.
You go go left.
When I go left.
You go go right.
When I carry go.
You go chup ah.
When I drop ah, you go carry go, not soul, not soul. Eko komawani nuomi, omeji ole pepo. Eko komawani nuomi, omeji ole pepo. Eko komawani nuomi, omeji ole pepo. Moni wo 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 wo, eko komawani nuomi.
Lay lay.
Moni wo 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 wo, eko komawani nuomi.
Lay lay.
Not soul. When I go dey smiling.
You go dey turn case.
When I dey running.
You go dey walking.
When I dey jump fufu.
You go dey shuffle group.
La 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 la.
La 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 la.
Make I waka for my road.
Make you not dey waka for your road.
Lo 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 lo.
La 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 la.
Eko komawani nuomi yo, chapa arami ye ye. Charati masa hiye hiye wo 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 wo. Moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay oh, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay. Eko komawani nuomi yo. Eko komawani nuomi yo, leba, moni eko komawani nuomi, leba, charati masa hiye hiye. We dey eba arami wo 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 wo. Moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay oh, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay. Ah, eh, ah, eh, ah, eh. Moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay oh, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay, lay lay, moni lay lay. Thank you so much, Kitoz, Kitoz, thank you so much. So, we not be talk again, we not be speak our mind oh, I not be give my opinion on the matter. African leaders, them dey hold our country, them go jet our journalists, they go him dey speak the truth. Them go jet innocent people, they go them dey steam their mind, them go oppress my people, no, no, no. Where is our democracy? Where is our freedom of speech?
Freedom of speech, freedom of speech.
Where is our liberty? Make you not tell me now, now, not soul.
Small talking, big problem. 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 Small talking, big problem.
When I people they face injustice, so we not be talk again. People they disagree with your action, not soul they become your enemy. What kind of nonsense be that oh? Not soul it dey happen for Africa oh.
Small talking, big problem. 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 Small talking, big problem.
No freedom, no democracy, no people, no country, no justice, no peace, I say oh. We not go take them anymore. I say we not go take them anymore. Senseless decision.
No, no.
Foolishness attitude.
No, no.
The killing of my people.
No, no.
They oppress all my people.
No, no.
Senseless decision.
No, no.
Foolishness attitude.
No, no.
The killing of my people, they oppress all my people. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, kitos, kitos.